What is your determination?
Do we, you don't, these don't happen to have the original file from when we talked about this in 1819 where it was. I should have brought it and I just didn't think about it.
I'll give it to the office.
I'm just sensitive to the fact that you have a purchase and sale in place that you need to resolve and I don't want to push this off for another month because I know that then has an impact, but at the same time, I have a couple of questions and I would like to take a look at what was presented back then.
I'm just looking at your, the board's letter of June 13th of 2019 and they, the board is very concerned about the drainage going on to a budding neighbor's properties. That's what the concern was and that's what's been engineered out. Is it exactly what you asked?
Well, no, it's not exactly what was proposed. It was something else was done. It wasn't exactly as it was supposed to be. And the reason that we did receive the letter and the reason that we had to hold the meeting is that no one on this board wanted to sign the plans until it came back before this board. So that's the position we're in. It's unfortunate that the neighbors aren't here this evening.
Well, we put a stipulation on no occupancy permit till they came back. And there was no plan, right? It was, the question asked was the grades were going to be the same as the yards in the...
I thought they had to come back.
Yeah, they should have. In the meantime, it gets sold. So it kind of puts us between a rock and a hard place.
So basically the water's been stopped because it's a burn here now, right on the property. So if there's burns in here, because of the swales in there.
What's that?
There's one going here and one burns here. And then here, I don't know if this is stopping or picking back out around, if that was always there, but that was the height. So at the elevation, 700, 780, 790.
So I think this is the plan from their Asbilly plan.
Yeah, that yard you were talking about, it's 107.
Oh, it's only got one driveway through the, there are two driveways in there now.
But actually, on this plan, it looks like it actually ran from the back of the house towards Central Street, not Plymouth Street, towards the back.
Yeah, kind of to the side. That one lot looks pretty flat. The one you were talking about that had water and it looks pretty flat.
Yeah.
But we don't know what the original grades were all back.
It's not moving this way, it's moving this way.
So the other plan I have is the Form A plan that was done. And I'm not sure there are grades on them.
So it kind of went back, I think originally went back off the side, back towards where that drainage is originally, that one lot we're talking about, 107. Then it goes 104, but it went to the back where that drain has always been.
The standing water in the neighbor's yard, I'd be less, I'd be concerned if it was coming off of their property, but if it's just gathering there, but it's just a...
Right, but is it because they filled that whole area in that it no longer, no longer drains towards that drain that's always been there out near Central Street?
I don't know. It looks like it always flowed, on paper, it looks like it always flowed to the right and down.
Those yards always drained across the backs towards that drain.
Towards here.
Yep.
So it came this way. And now it's just coming this way and then going that way.
So he is correct, the swale works for a lot of running off their property, but the question is, did they fill it in too high to trap water in back yards? I don't know the answer.
This is the original letter. Do you want to look at the pass?
Yes.
So basically we're looking to judge now what they did, I know what they did is not what they want.
109, 204, we did something...
The question is, did it flow this way off the property then kind of back and around, or did it sheet out?
Right. elevations of all them lots to see that. Who would have cared about?
Well, the gray area in this seems to be that water that's leaving these other people's property was going, let's say that it did go across their lawn, either way it drained out and they did, they're doing what they're doing to keep water from their property leaking into their neighbor's property. It always comes down, the gray area being that these two houses that it just naturally flowed off of it are really, it's really up to them to sort of deal with the drainage if the water's not coming off their property. If that water's just standing there for the second, because of the soil conditions. Did the puddle look, was it a green, was it a backyard?
Yeah. It was a big green backyard lawn.
Oh, and it had standing water on the green lawn.
I guess the other flip side is, none of them neighbors are here.
Yeah.
They don't, they didn't know that though.
They knew, if they knew we were having a meeting or not, but they're not here.
They didn't know. I mean, I didn't reach out to any of them.
Right, so...
Okay, so that's kind of... So, I mean, they've done their job in terms of there's no water leaving their property onto, in a budding site. Yeah. Trying to think how we, we had one situation like this. But have they created a drainage problem on a budding site? I don't know. Because that water that used to leave, now doesn't.
Yeah, and I guess that goes back to my, when they said the grades were going to be the same as these back yards.
It definitely isn't.
And it isn't.
But then does that fall on us to come up with a remedy, or is that a civil...
If it shouldn't be our problem to come up with a remedy, it should be the developer.
Well, so long as that water that's standing, I asked the question about the grass because if it was a patent, they constantly get water there, the grass would be dead, you know, after all that time. So if it's fairly recent and it's sitting there and it's, and if it's coming off their property, that's, then there's an issue with, no, that's, the swale isn't working the way it's supposed to. But if the swale is...
I've been down there a couple of times when it ran, he's absolutely correct, the water that comes off their property runs into that swale and apparently works.
Yeah.
But is the question is, them filling in that, that area create a problem for the people along Plymouth Street? It appears that it sheets that way, or is supposed to sheet that way gradually from, from way to the left at 108 to, it goes 109, 108, 107, it's a real slight...
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with them stopping water from getting onto their property. Again, we've, I think when we've had situations like this before, the project's been a little larger and the engineers work at the green.
We don't get involved in one and two family...
No, no, we don't, but that's what I'm saying.
Again, it goes back to the fill permit.
I wish we had the input from the neighbors just so we know the reality of it.
I have one of the neighbor's phone number in my office I can call.
I don't think we should hold up everything else for her to do that.
Like I said, now it's our problem, they sat here and told us one thing and now it's our problem and it shouldn't be.
Do we have a copy of the fill permit? What are you looking for? Just to see what we wrote on it.
Actually, I think, didn't you attach a copy of the fill permit?
No, I just attached a copy of the letter the planning board wrote as to what their requirements were.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
Right, I mean, obviously we thought they were going to take fill out if we gave them 1,500 cubic feet. If you want to do some quick math, there's at least, at least 4,000 cubic yards of fill brought in there.
That is the fill permit, decision letter. That's what you attached, yeah?
So we focus on the amount coming in and drainage going on to a budding neighbor's properties, which it doesn't do. We didn't put any heights or...
No.
That sort of detail, so, I mean... Well, basically, we try not to set precedent, I guess, I imagine you're trying to speed that out, but...
Because we've got one that's coming up, real quick.
If we had a bond or something like that, then we'd have no problem with it because then if there's something needs to be done, it can be done. The question is now, if, if this doesn't perform like it's supposed to perform, then it's going to be the neighbor's problem or someone has to work it out. I don't know who's going to work it out. It certainly isn't, you know, there's no right of ways in there for the town or anything else like that to maintain any of that. It's not a subdivision control situation to be getting involved with. It was strictly a fill that was being put in there that was not permitted. And when we called them on it, they came in here and then they brought their engineer in here, SciTech, and they told us they were going to solve the problem. And these are the plans that would do it and this would work. But obviously, it hasn't been totally done the way SciTech's plans were to begin with and we're at this point. So I, the problem is that someone obviously wants to move into the house and someone wants to sell it and they don't happen to be the parties we originally dealt with.
I would like to believe that when Patrick was out there, that he took everything into consideration. He's not here to speak for himself and I don't want to speak for him, but he usually is pretty thorough.
It seems unfortunate that people put in a situation where they're going to buy the house and we had, we'd had a plan that was approved and apparently it wasn't, what the designs that we approved weren't followed. You know, you hate to say let the buyer beware, it seemed like if they had done a more thorough examination of this or to find out that the thing wasn't in conformance. It seems like there's a lot of failures along this chain. But, you know, what, I know that, you know, like when we had the concrete placed down there on 58, we made them come back because they hadn't done a lot of things to that. But I'm not sure we can do that in this situation.
They still haven't come back.
No, they still haven't come back.
I got, we're probably thinking too much in the end side of this. So we've got, we've got neighbors come in and they talk, forget all that plastic stuff, you can't hear me. We get neighbors come in and after the fact and they've got water in their property and there's nobody, there's nobody, they expect us, we could do something, but honestly, there's nobody there to do anything other than going into a civil suit or some sort and the people are long gone. And it could, to me, it sounds like we could okay this and with the building permit and we, but that, what happens is, knowing all this backside of it, is that now we throw the neighbors, when they could, when something could have been done earlier, now we throw the neighbors into that situation where we've got water now, we never had water before, now what do we do? And, you know, we don't want to leave them, same thing as if, if this is your house and you're going to move into it and someone does the same thing to you. And who do you turn to? So we're trying to, we're trying to make sure that doesn't happen in the beginning. Not, not a matter of trying to stick you with it, but we want to approve something. While I'm thinking of what Mr. Smith's saying about the bond, though, of holding something that you could come back and request to have the bond removed so you can get the money back.
Well, but there's no bond.
Well, that's what I was just starting to develop myself, what, what, what would be the bond and how would you determine it? We've used bonds before to get people to come back.
You still have that other plan? You guys still got that other plan?
Oh, the large one?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if the request is, I would want to get more information before making a decision, but if they would really like a decision tonight, then I think the quick way is to have a bond put aside, that if in the next calendar year, it turns out that there's a drainage problem, that that's where the money to remediate, remediate it comes from.
That would, that would put us in a much better position because once we've signed this thing and they sell the house, it's, the landowners that are neighbors now are going to have a problem with each other. I mean, if you had a nice neighbor and the neighbor said, oh yeah, you know, I'll help you, we'll dig something out on my property, but more often than not, the neighbor says, I'm not going to let someone come on my property and make a swale or do something different. And then you have a neighborhood problem that will continue as long as the neighbors live there. And that's the problem that I have with it. And if we did have a bond of some sort, if it was a $5,000 bond, I don't, I don't, I would hope that that would be enough to cover it. You would have a bond and you would say, you know, after, you know, six months or something, or if the neighbors came in and said, hey, we're, we're in agreement with this thing, it works, release the, release the bond. But the problem is, we signed this plan, we, we give permission and it's out of our hands and then everybody comes running in here complaining about it and there's nothing we can do for them. And hopefully, they would have been here this evening, which would have helped to some degree, but obviously, when you first put something in, it's one thing and the water table changes a little bit and rains come and so forth.
Well, the bond would give us leverage. You know, this is something that I guess, if we were to have a motion to approve this tonight, I think a condition would be to have, have a bond to cover these issues that have been brought up.
And the other thing is, they brought in all this fill, which, you know, without permits or anything else and just did it.
We don't even know where it came from.
Yeah, no. That's my concern because we don't know what, what makeup of the fill is because we don't know where it came from.
I mean, I guess I'd leave it up to you. If you want this done tonight, then I think we need to talk about having a bond, just because we don't know the full story.
I don't know what the, the bond is. Are we bonding for the failure of the drainage system that your engineer told us to put in and that you asked for, its performance? I have no problem with that. If you're, for bonding for stagnant water on someone's property, we have no control over that. We've done what the engineer has asked and what the board has asked. And that is to build a swale to protect against drainage off the site, that's what we did. Engineer has examined it, it works. If you want surety that it works in the future, that's fair. I don't have any problem with that. But we can't bond that water's going to collect on someone else's property that we're going to correct. That's not fair.
No, the...
I don't think that's what we're saying.
Okay.
No, I think we're looking for...
No, we're saying that the water should go into this channel and not go on the other person's property, but it's on the other person's property to the other person's property.
That's fine.
I think what we're looking for is a, a bond to ensure that the thing works in the future.
That's absolutely fair. I have no problem with that at all.
Well, I, I mean, otherwise, we wait another month and you can't sell the place and...
We're very confident as well, we're very confident.
And then you'd have to, you know, when you do the agreement with the, with the neighbor, just explain to them this is what, and it's for their benefit also. I'm sure at some point, you could have a civil suit and that's between them, but it's, it was put in our lap, probably shouldn't have been, probably, the whole thing shouldn't have happened the way it did. We don't want to just have a cease and desist, which we didn't do to them, to stop the construction and everything else, which we could have done. And we, we just don't want to see a problem come up later.
That's fair enough. We should be able to stand surety for the quality of the drainage in there and make sure it doesn't go off site. That's what you guys wanted, that's what we're trying to do and if it fails, we'll stand surety for it.
Mr. Chairman, if you compare what was proposed, they've filled this in three feet, which is, the original proposal was the grades at the backyard, so everything was flowing this way. Now you filled in this three feet, you've obviously trapped water in these backyards. When they come in, their engi, not your engineer, your work engineer said it was going to be built to the plan, we laid the dirt out to dry because it was wet and I was under the impression they were going to remove it. So now, now we're asked to approve something that's obviously trapping water in backyards because they filled it in three feet.
Is trapping water where, Bob?
Into the, the houses on Plymouth Street because they filled out back three feet in the end.
So it, it wasn't, the water wasn't going in there before and is now...
The original plan shows the grids the same as the backyard, so it flows from here to here. And then when you look at the Asbilly, they filled it in three feet.
And now the water flows from that.
So granted, their trench works, I've seen it work, but yet, these backyards don't flow that way anymore because of the three feet that they filled in.
So they trap water in the backyards at the other...
That's what I think. Not an engineer, but the elevations show that.
So I guess, you know, what's the answer?
Again, we go back to, they sat here and told us what we wanted to hear.
Obviously, they had a plan and it was never built to the plan. I don't know what to tell you. It's not right.
And I don't know if the water's trapped in there. This swale is on their, their property, taking their water. I, I think them backyards are all trapped. But I don't know that from the salivation because the elevations ain't that great.
I mean, that's kind of my point, it's like we can hold this off a month, go talk to Marshall, get the building plans, talk to neighbors, but then that puts them off a month, or we have them put some money in either in a bond or an escrow or something so that if this is proven to be an issue down the road, that there's a remedy there that can fix it. And if it's, and after a year, no one has a problem with it, they can get the money back.
My, my problem is not the trench, it's the neighbors that they impacted by fill.
No, that's what I'm saying, if they have to lower that trench, if they have to put in, you know, a couple of inlets so that the water flows out of the backyards, down through the gully, whatever, the more, establish a more natural flow.
Is this extra or do you need it back?
No, I need it back.
And who's going to pick the figure?
So Rick, what are you looking for to, to ask for a motion to delay this till the next meeting, considering?
I mean, is there other information we can get from either the building department, Patrick, from whoever, from the neighbors, that would shed more light onto...
And again, I would like to believe that Patrick did a thorough job, but he's not here to ask them. He's, yeah, he's just looking at a lot of coming off their property, not, I assume, not...
Not, oh yeah, the whole site's raised three feet and the water's trapped from how everyone else is...
I don't know, he's not here to ask them, so...
Yeah, this, this is the bad thing, that we don't have Patrick here tonight, we don't have the neighbors here tonight either.
Well, then that sounds like a postponement of a...
Gentlemen, I, your letter indicated that you wanted the water staying on the property, not going onto neighbor's property. That's, that's what the wording of your letter was. That's what's been done, that's what the engineer engineered and that's what my client installed. If that's installed improperly and doesn't meet your compliance for draining off-site, we'll fix it. But I, I mean, Mr. Soper's bringing up another issue that's completely different than what was mentioned in...
This was the whole issue, this is the fill permit. This, this is the fill permit and I asked the questions and the grades were going to stay the same and they're not.
I'm only going by your June 13th, 2019 letter.
Right, and they brought in more than 1,500 cubic feet of fill in there.
In fact, as we said in my letter to you, 350 cubic feet was removed.
Would you like to do some math quick, three feet times, you know, there's at least 5,000 cubic yards of fill brought in there, over, over and above the 1,500.
I would welcome the math on that, Mr. Soper, because that's not true.
It's not, it's not three feet higher than everything else?
I don't know what the elevation is.
The elevation's from that plan to this plan, the three feet.
Mr. Soper, I'm telling you, no additional fill was brought on that site by this developer.
Not by him, prior to you buying this property, this all happened.
So between...
So the fill permit wasn't your client's. It was the person that sold it to him.
So between June 13th and 19, and my client taking over, you're saying the Rorx dumped additional fill on site.
No, it was already there.
That the...
That's why he got called in for the fill permit, because he brought all this fill in there.
Well, there's 1,500 in...
No, that's what we approved for him to put in there. He had already brought way more than that in there.
It says applicant has already approximately 1,578 cubic feet on site. No more.
And I'm saying it was a lot more than that.
Well, that's what it says in, in the letter. No more than 1,578 cubic feet.
Right, and how much do you bring in?
That's what they said they brought in.
How much do you bring in?
How much what?
How much do you bring in? If that's built up three feet, that whole area.
Well, yeah, you dispersed, what was it there?
Come on. Unfortunately, you weren't here at that meeting. You get dragged in to the middle of this at the end and I'm sorry for that.
Mr. Soper, I just want to collide with what you want.
You're putting the plant board in a tough spot.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, based on, based on what the original fill permit is, should he take out what's above the 15? Because I know there's more than that in there.
Is our complaint more with the building department?
Oh, I don't know. No, the building department did, they said they would have, after the fact, they brought the fill in, now they're coming in to us and then we put it... in to us, and then we put, put the occupancy permit up to make sure that the fill got, that it got graded properly. And it's not. And then, again, I'll go back to, I would assume Patrick did a good job. I'm hoping that this all, you know, I mean, you saw standing water out there. I'm hoping that this all sheets the way it's supposed to be. I wish Patrick was here that I could ask him.
Do we want to put this off or do we want to move forward?
I can call Patrick if you'd like. He, he had another meeting tonight, but he should be done by now. That's why he's not here.
It seems pretty reasonable, Bob, with what you were saying about-
That's, that's about 44,000 yards, cubic yards of fill that they brought in, roughly. Just on that one lot. That doesn't even include the other lot.
Cubic feet.
Cubic yards.
Cubic yards.
Yards.
I'm sorry, Mr. Soper, your calculation is 44,000 cubic yards were brought on?
No, 4,428.
4,428.
If you take, if you take the, the width times the length of the lot times three feet, you get cubic feet, and then convert it into cubic yards. Again, it's three feet higher than what was proposed.
You want to voicemail?
No. You know, the 1,500, if you look it out of the plan, was to grade around the house and the, it was basically flat until you got to the house. The same grades as the backyards. And then as it got up to the house and it got up, went up to 110 or 111. It was 110. But the driveway itself was the same as the backyards. It went away and then followed it down. So everything sheeted down to that drain from the original plan. Now you raise it up three feet.
You're right. You're absolutely right with this.
And that fill was there prior to the new person buying. That's why we had him come in. He had already brought the fill in.
The roadway sits here, 108. It's supposed to be the exact height as the backyard.
And his engineer sat here and told us that's what it was going to be.
Right here.
Yes, yep. That's their plan. That's what, and his engineer submitted.
So no bond, and it comes back to you need the grades to be dropped?
If there's a problem.
Right, realistically, I don't know.
Do you, do you have this plan?
I, I don't, sir, no. I'm, I'm sure my client does. Was that the original plan that was submitted with the-
Yeah, that's, that's our copy, so.
Yeah.
That was the-
It's all part of the management. The driveway grade is what, which is the same as the backyards.
And now those grades are at 111.
Basically, on the house. But that one was a foot feet. But that's, it's more. And again, not far. But the roadway, that driveway is 107.
Now it's, it's constructed.
Now it's, it's correct. So I fully believe when they said your swale works, however, we have a plan where it's been a large stills, which she hasn't passed for years, kind of this way, this direction. And now can't.
Well, I understand that problem, but that's not the problem with the gentleman's left. It's just the opposite problem, that you didn't manage to come along with that.
So.
And again, if Patrick took all that into consideration and these backyards still sheeted flow that way, I don't see it being a problem, but I, I can't tell you.
So just, just quick questions on my end while Liz is doing this. Did your client build the house? He built the house?
Yes.
Okay, but it was already graded when you bought the land?
No, the site work was done. You went in there, there was a pile of material, and you worked on it from there, is that correct?
Hence, that's when we called him in, prior to them buying.
Right, so it was, the fill was on the, the site?
It was there.
But it wasn't spread out, wasn't graded, wasn't landscaped? The foundation wasn't in?
The foundation wasn't in.
All right, thanks so much.
The fill was, there was one pile of fill. Most of it was already spread out. One pile was kind of fill in around the house and everything else down. The roadway was already-
Yeah.
Roughed in.
I'm going to put you on speaker, okay?
On the other hand, that roadway's been there for two years.
Right, but the fill, the fill, when we called him in, it was just they were trucking fill and trucking fill and trucking fill.
Right, but the driveway has been there for well over a year.
Not the second driveway, the first driveway. It was two drivys-
Their driveway, right, their driveway.
No, the other driveway.
Their driveway, Patrick on the line right now, so if you-
What's, what's your question for Pat?
Patrick?
Can you get him?
How's it going?
Good.
We're, we're looking at these plans, and obviously, part of the concern was they filled, filled in back there three feet.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm concerned, are they-
The gas don't play a part in the design.
Right, are they, are they trapping water in those backyards or is it still flowing? I guess is our biggest problem.
That, that's why when I did the initial review, I commented on the lack of a swale between the properties. They went back and they actually built a real, you know, a real infiltration swale, like a gravel diaphragm-
Yeah.
-to actually catch the water off that driveway and off that slope before it entered those properties. Because that was a real concern the first time we looked at it.
The origin, the original plan shows the grades of the backyards being the same, and I think that originally, those backyards all sheet flowed towards Central Street. So the question we had with unfilling that in, that, that swale don't take water from the backyards, it's just from their property. So essentially, are they, are they trapping water in those backyards or does it still flow?
Well, it's hard to say because I wasn't involved in that project originally with, before they built it. So, I mean, they're definitely catching the water off of their property. They haven't altered the grades to the properties off of Central Street. I mean, it's possible those driveways could have made it to that catch basin that sits in that easement originally, and if they did, it's still going there. You know, again, I understand that there was already, always was some kind of an issue with water in those backyards, but that, that infiltration swale is catching the water now that they've constructed it, and it is carrying it from that rear area down to that catch basin in the easement.
And, and didn't they add a drain from one of the backyards to that swale?
There was a drain out between the driveways out front that they added that wasn't on the original plans. They did make a correction on that.
I mean, the house is on Plymouth Street. Didn't they add something from one of them backyards?
Um, not that I'm really aware of.
So again, your opinion is they didn't create a, that water should still sheet flow from the backyards to that catch basin over by Rock's property.
Well, and that's why we commented on, you know, the construction of that infiltration swale, because without it, they were clearly having an issue before they built that swale.
So Patrick, if, if we had a, a bond to make, the problem we have right now is they would like to sell the house.
Right.
Obviously, there's someone going to move in the house, and then what's going to be done at that point? Two, two problems. Who's going to pay for it? And do we have a right to get on their property if it's necessary? And the question is, how can we handle that so they can sell, sell the house? Of course, they, the party that's selling the house will leave, and then the new party is going to be there. And then who's going to pay for the work that needs to be done, and do we have permission to go on that neighbor's property if it's necessary?
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one because, you know, the only easements we have out there is we have the access easement for the second lot out back, and then they had to create a drainage easement from Rock's property out front. I mean, the, boy. And there is, with that existing catch basin, there is a drain line, from my understanding, that goes from Plymouth Street out to Central Street?
Yep.
And that would be a prescriptive easement for the town? You could actually have them grant, well, you don't, oh, boy. See, it's, it's one of those things, you come up with an idea and it sounds good at first, but then it's not so good. I mean, the planning board, you're certainly within your right to take a bond until you feel like the issues resolve. I mean, it would really be like the form of a covenant where the developer would have to take liability of it for a certain period of time. And, you know, we're coming into that time of year of being winter, moving into spring eventually, where if we do have a drainage issue out in that area, it's going to present I don't know that the planning board should take or want to take responsibility of that.
I would agree, that amount. Yeah, Patrick, this is Bruce. We had discussed, you know, requiring a bond or, or something like that to cover this. Yeah.
I, I would say that, you know, taking a bond would definitely be a good idea in this case. You know, I mean, we just had, you know, one belt of really heavy rain, and I obviously didn't go out there to, to see because I wasn't asked to. But again, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to take a bond and, you know, maybe you hold it to, say, June of next year. You know, basically, six months. I would think by that point, if we were going to have an issue in that area, it's going to present itself between now and six months from now.
And then how do you put a price on it?
How would we put an amount on this, Patrick?
Don't you typically hold $5,000 for a site plan?
Minimum. Minimum.
Mm-hmm.
That was our minimum.
Right.
And you think that's more than enough to take care of any issues?
Yeah, I mean, what we'd be looking at would be, you know, and any problem areas would present themselves, we'd be able to target that, and they'd be able to make improvements to direct that water down to that catch basin, because that's the, that's the low point, the catch point, where that catch basin is. And they already did a pretty good job of clearing that area out and constructing that, that drainage swale. So I would think, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, wholly minor and low-cost solutions out there.
That's, our, our biggest concerns are the people on Plymouth Street, so.
Right.
Especially after they, they filled out back three feet.
Right, right. And I mean, again, I agree with that, and I pointed that out in the first review that-
Right, yep.
You know, they, they had definitely filled that, raised that driveway several feet above what they had originally proposed.
And unfortunately, it's not, it's not the people that own it now that, that filled it. So you think 5,000 is enough to take care of any issues?
I, I would think it's enough, and, you know, and again, hopefully, the, the bond would just be more of an incentive for the responsible parties just to go out there and, and just correct the situation they created if it arises.
Is that reasonable?
It is, sir.
You guys?
I'm good with it.
You guys all set with Patrick?
Thanks, Patrick. Thank you, Patrick.
Oh, you're very welcome.
I'll talk to you later, thanks.
All right, thanks, Liz.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Senator, it's agreeable with you to submit a $5,000 bond in any form, if you wish.
We may do it as a cash, cash escrow to the planning board, something like that. And upon that, we could consider you signing on so we could get our occupancy permit.
Take a motion.
Thank you.
Somebody would like to make a motion? Yeah, I'll make the motion for $5,000 bond until- Are we going to set a date for that? Are we going to put a end date to that?
June, Patrick was suggesting?
June.
June 30th.
21.
$5,000 cash bond carried till June 30. If there's any problems with the, the neighbors on, on Plymouth Street, that, that money will be used for that, and construction will be able to go to the, to the, to the drain.
Okay.
So on that-
I made that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous then.
Do you want to vote to sign the permit or can I just have somebody not sign it now?
We can have a vote to sign the, sign the permit right now, and there's no problem with that. We normally don't do that because the clerk usually does that, but-
I'd like that motion.
We can make a motion to sign the permit. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So move.
Can I have you sign it? And then I'll hold it till I get the surety?
Yeah. You're a morlus?
I'm not, but I can leave it downstairs with our concierge.
Or if you could even just give us the whole department or-
So do you want to drop a check off and I'll pop over before I go to the library?
Yeah, what time do you-
I'm going over there at 9:30, so anytime before then.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah, it's all right, Liz.
All right.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The vote to release the bond on Crabtree Extension Road.
Okay, I have, I prepared a voucher. It's, and it's floating around somewhere, and I can't remember the numbers now, but they requested, Mr. Rourke's attorney and Mr. Ward both requested that, requested, excuse me, that their, that Crabtree Lane be returned, and that he get the interest on McHugh Circle through November 30th. So that's in the blue folder.
We can do Crabtree Extension first. That, that was approved at a town meeting, and that was completely completed, right? There was no- Is that all done and back and we're all good on that?
Could you repeat that, Bob?
Is that going to be certified?
He, he sent some paperwork to town council who has responded to them, and they're working it out.
So the answer is no.
That, that was the last, it was last week I had an email from town council to Mr. Timmons, Attorney Timmons.
So we can make a motion, contention on, on town council approving it? I'll make that motion. Do we have, we don't have the amount?
It's in the blue folder right there.
It's like 51,000 something.
I'm going to get the exact-
Is that all of it or is that just the four, see the 481, and there's a number above it?
Down there.
Can't believe you don't have a sand my scribbly scrolls. All right, so it's 51,27631.
That is crap. That is Crabtree Extension.
That's Crabtree Extension.
Is that 51,000?
51,276,031 cents.
And that doesn't include interest, or it doesn't include interest?
It includes whatever we have up through now, yeah, which would be interest, I think.
That is the motion with the approval of town council?
Yes.
Someone want to make that motion?
Bob did.
Make the motion.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So move. On the vote to release the interest held on bond for McHugh Circle through 11/30/20.
It's $489.19.
Motion made.
489.19. Someone want to make that motion?
Made the motion.
Motion made. Seconded. Okay. Any further discussion?
Is this the, which part of McHugh Circle is this? Is this the?
That's the.
So it's the circle itself. It's the road that comes off of Crabtree.
Yeah.
The problem we have with it, Rick, is that the interest is theirs. Anytime they ask for it, theoretically, you have to give it to them, even if it's more money to complete the road than the bond is. But we should have enough with the, but it's one of those things that you have no control over, basically.
No, it's more that we gave them the permit how many years ago at this point?
Oh, forever.
The most recent one, and there still hasn't been any work on it.
But you can't, I've been told we can't hold up the interest. It's their money.
The interest has to be released.
Yeah.
You don't have to release any of the bond.
So it's on the interest, which is our legal responsibility, I guess. So motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one. So voted. Release the bond on Buckley Place Private Road.
What is the difference in the document we got today versus the one we got in our package?
Like 25,000 dollars, I think. Am I right, Attorney Riley?
That's right, John Riley, representing Avenue Investments, Buckley Place. This is the two-lot subdivision up in Dorsey Street, Private Way. They're requesting the revised bond estimate. So Patrick from PMP drafted up the bond estimate, but his bond estimate, he wasn't aware that the vertical, vertical granite curving had been waived. So I asked him to update it with that. So there's about eight items that he took off of it. Essentially, he's updated it now, so there's about $8,500 worth of work left. But it's the planning board's policy to hold no less than 25,000 until the final haz built signed off, and we're fine with that. We'll probably be back at the next meeting to release the remainder of the bond.
And the vertical granite curb is, do you have to do anything? Probably just whatever doing out in the street, there's no curbing out in the street, right?
Correct.
So that's 24, almost 25,000.
I'll make that motion to reduce it to 25,000.
Motion to reduce it to $25,000 made and seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
What is the quick summary of the work left to be done?
Got to paint the stop line, which is actually going to be done tomorrow. They were repairing a cap in one of the drains. They actually set aside $4,000 of 8,500 for one year of snow plowing and road maintenance, which actually my client's not responsible for, the homeowners are, but just pennies at this point, we can, we'll resolve it at the end. And it was, he counted 25 evergreen trees instead of 27, and we'll respond why, because we didn't want to cut down an existing tree. So, but that's just some details we have to follow up with, but we couldn't get it done tonight.
Okay. The 25,000 more than covers the amount of work. So motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you have two minutes?
Yes.
When he comes back, should we jump to 662 Adams Street?
Please.
When he comes back, should we jump to 662?
We just have one more, and then we can go to that. It shouldn't take long to do the Century Estates, because I presume, Adams Street will take a little longer.
Progress Street one, too, so I can wait till Adams Street's done. So people can leave. Whatever you'd like.
Yeah, I think that'll take a little while on the progress. You have that information in front of you on Century Estates, so take a look at that.
Thank you.
Sorry to see you come back, Rick, on the Century Estates update on Form L, which you all have.
Sean Riley, representing developer Century Estates, we have no objection to the revised bond estimate number.
1660250.
To be honest with you, I don't have it in front of me, so whatever.
16600250. It's different than the front page, but the actual Form L added $2.50 for some reason.
I think for the benefit of the town accountant, we're rounding it off.
It might be better off.
Someone want to make a motion?
To 166, so you left a 250 on there. 166, $166,000. Make that motion.
So how much would be left?
That's what would be left.
Okay.
Just so the boards are aware, I asked Mr. Rose on his timetable. I told him, you know, he'd have to get a certain amount of things done this fall if he wanted to have the road accepted this spring. He said he has no rush. He wants to actually wait till the spring and replace any trees that get damaged over the winter, find out if there's anything that has to be fixed, and then we'll just do it. If there's a fall town meeting, we'll do it the fall town meeting. Otherwise, we'll do it the next spring town meeting. So he's not in a rush. He wants to kind of, as he said, do it right.
Good.
So the motion?
Motion made, 166,000.
Seconded?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Seconded, then someone?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
On the motion, any questions? Say aye.
Aye.
So move.
Thank you. I don't know what the Chamberlain Street update is. Is that something about me?
Yeah, that's, that's where the water, some water's flowing down there.
I have no idea what it's about.
I know that they've.
There was a water issue out there.
The real Chamberlain, I'm thinking the paper.
Right, no, and I think you sent us a letter.
Yes, I sent you photos, right. They've done the top photo.
Yeah, I just included that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's been top voted and filled in the side. Yep. Great. Thank you.
No, because it's just a site plan.
Yeah, on the site plan review at 662 Adams Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ronald Whitney for Robertin, Jane Sullivan, owners of 662 Adams Street. Are the boarders aware of this property, which we've been before you a couple of times previously? We're here before you tonight on the site plan approval. Here with me, Sean Hardy from Hardy Engineering, Donna Waymouth. He's prepared a site plan, which was submitted to the board. And I believe, based on PMP's recommendations, he has further updates to the site plan to show you tonight. Just to refresh the board, 662 Adams Street is in an industrial zone. To the right of the property, as you stand on the street and look at it, is an industrial property that's been used as an industrial property for a significant period of time. To the left of the property is a home that is owned by these folks down here in the front row. There is a further issue besides the site plan that is that it was filled, taken off of the lot. Phil brought on the lot. There was approximately 1,600 feet, yards, I should say, of fill that was taken off of the lot. There was, of that 1,600 yards, I should say, 400 of that was moved on the lot. So it's created a berm to the back of the property. 700 was moved out, and 500 was moved back in. So the net that has been moved back in, the net that has been moved out, I'm sorry, is 700 yards. Difficult to follow. 1,600 total was moved on the lot. 400 stayed to the back of the lot. So there was 1,200 that were removed, and 400 was brought back in. So it's about 700 yards net, less fill on the lot today than was prior to any.
I'm sorry, did you say 1,600 was brought on? I just want to make sure I get it straight after the last hearing.
1,600 was moved on the lot, Liz.
Was moved, so you like kind of dug it up and moved it around?
Yeah, 400 remained, 400 of that 1,600 remained on the lot. 1,200 was removed, and 700 was brought back in, 400 was brought back in. The net reduction is 700 yards. And it was done in conjunction with the neighbor, I'm sorry, I don't recall you.
Patrick.
Patrick. They were working together, the two parties were working together. Things kind of fell apart as far as the relationship between the two. But as I say, the lot is in the industrial zone. The use that Mr. Sullivan hopes to make of the lot is the parking of his snow removal vehicles, heavy equipment. They will stay on there for most of the good weather months, from April until November. Then they will be moved off to various sites. He works with Mass Department of Transportation. And so the equipment will be moved to various sites for the winter months. So there will be very little traffic on and off of the site. And it is an allowed use according to bylaws under 175.21, the table of uses. Under H2 and 3, the open lot storage of vehicles is an allowed use. So I know that PMP had offered a lot of comments about the site plan. I think the best I could do at this point for the board is turn it over to Mr. Hardy to review the site plan with you.
Just before he gets started.
Yes.
I have Mike's phone number, because he couldn't, because of COVID, he can't come back to the state right now.
All right.
So when you want me to, he said he'd be available by phone.
Why don't we, why don't we call him now so he can hear what?
Who are we calling?
Mike Perrault.
Mike Perrault.
I guess my comment is, with all the comments that came from PMP, are we wasting our time here?
Well, I.
It's pretty obvious there's a lot of stuff that.
I'd ask to that question, because my question came to my mind was, I thought this was a project on showing a grading plan and drainage. And this huge list, it's like a whole other thing. That's what, I kind of thought that PMP, first I thought, because we've talked to PMP years and years ago, that if you've got this much markup, you should have just dropped it, told us right away, the plans aren't ready, and don't waste any more time on it. When I started reading that, but I thought, reading this time, I thought these were comments, I didn't think they had to do this. We weren't looking for all that information, all the full site plan review.
Well, we were doing, we were doing the site plan.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
And there was an awful lot of issues, I guess.
All right. I think the issues might be better handled between PMP and them. I mean, we can go over tonight and do all this, but I don't, you know, as far as, obviously. Maybe you can answer that question.
I would assume that you've gotten this letter?
We got the letter, and so it was like the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I spent, you know, last week trying to put together revisions based on that and a response. I haven't finalized a formal response yet. Certainly, some of the comments, I think we agree with, some we do not. You know, some of it was things, you know, not necessarily technical in nature, but, you know, a 300-foot locust plan or things like that, that we've, you know, happy to provide. And we'll be making a formal resubmission based on that.
Would you want me to get Mike on the phone now, and he could, as he go over it, or would you rather I have it now?
That's up to you guys. I mean, I don't know.
I mean, it's something that your client ends up now paying for, which is.
Yeah. I would say the last thing we want to do is waste your time. But I think it would be instructive if we would take 15 minutes, perhaps a half hour, to have a dialogue with your engineer, so that we might better understand what it is that we can provide to you by way of revisions to the plan.
Fine, we'll do that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, do we want to do that during the meeting, or should that be something that happens on?
Well, they have the right to ask those questions at the meeting, and so I think we should let them, if that's what they want to do, that's what we should do.
As long as we, I didn't want to go to an item-by-item by item thing.
Please.
I was hoping we could avoid going item by item, but yeah, let's find out in general what he needs to know.
If you want me to reach out to him directly, I can.
You can, well.
I'm telling you right now, though, there's some things that I disagree with him, but maybe, that may be a conversation with he and I can.
Well, it's up to you.
Resolve that, but.
And can I just interject here for a second? Which I don't normally try not to do, but I didn't receive a response from anybody. I emailed you multiple times. I emailed you. And it, maybe a lot of this could have been avoided tonight if somebody got back to me and said, oh, jeez, look at that letter, or something, but I, I mean, your client called, and I was like, I reached out to both of you, and he didn't know. I just, if we could get the reins of communication a little tighter, I would appreciate it.
We did receive Perrault's letter, and.
I emailed you twice. I emailed you about the application not having the zoning on it, and telling you that your client's email had bounced back. But nobody, you never got back to me.
I didn't.
And so I'm holding things up. I'm not distributing plans.
I didn't realize that you were asking for a response from him.
I was. I said, there's no zoning checked off on the application.
I understood that you were making an observation that we should address.
You guys paid.
I didn't realize that.
Ron, you guys paid $100 for a special permit application. So now I have a check I can't cash because it's got $100 more in it. I know this is all like little technical stuff that doesn't really make a big difference to you guys, but it's a pain for me. And if somebody could have just hit reply, it would have been nice. I would have known somebody had received something instead of basking in the netherworld, going, jeez, I don't know that anybody got anything, until your client actually reached out to me last Thursday.
Honestly, look, if I thought that you were expecting a reply, I would have given you the respect of a plausible.
Well, I asked what zoning relief you were looking for because you had paid for it. I thought that was clear in the email. Perhaps I wasn't that clear.
Well, one of the disjuncts was I went away unpress.
Well, one of the disjuncts was I went away on the precipice of filing the site plan. So my client had come down here and filed it himself.
Yep.
I was away for the following 10 days. So my apologies. If you were expecting a reply and you didn't get it.
Well, and he, his email was, it bounced back, so I didn't get in touch with him either until he called me. So I, I'm just, if we could get the communication together, I would appreciate it. Because some of the, a lot of this stuff could have been avoided in my world.
I guess.
I apologize.
Can I?
All right, we'll, we'll get a hold of.
There's an awful lot of stuff missing that's not going to get resolved tonight.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what I'm hearing from the engineer is that he feels that our collective time might be better spent with him discussing all of the issues that are brought up by PMP directly with PMP and coming back at our next meeting with a plan that more records with what PMP is looking for and track of viewpoints.
But we won't all PMP now and we'll let that work out. We can do with, whichever order you wish.
I think.
I mean, I'll do either. I just don't know that you guys want to, whether you guys want to go through that exercise or not. I mean, like I said, there's.
It's really up to you.
There's, there's things that said, you know, provide this on the plan, provide that on the plan, and those are easily done and, and were done. Like I said, it's just in the week between after Thanksgiving, I didn't have time, nor I knew, and I knew that they wouldn't accept a formal response and, and have any time to do anything with it. We wanted to come here tonight and kind of acknowledge that we got it, acknowledge that we're working towards it. And that, you know, certainly there's some edits that I frantically made hopefully to, before today that we did. But I have not prepared the final formal response to his letter.
All right.
So, so Mike hasn't seen what you've done?
He has not.
So, we heavily rely on our engineer, so.
So we can continue the hearing until, until the next month, which would be January 4th. And.
Are you ready to, I think Friday is the deadline? Either this Friday or next Friday is the deadline?
Yeah, I like this. I, I have a draft response. I have the plans ready to go. I just didn't want to send it, because again, I was working frantically to get ready and come here and prepare what I thought was reasonable. But I'm not ready to send a letter out without having another set of eyes or at least put it down and start looking at it for a little while till I make sure that I'm not saying something or I'm just saying something. But I'm ready to submit review, formal revisions. Again, I will say, I think there's probably some things in there that he and I are going to disagree with, that we'll have to have, have a discussion before this, before the board. But by and large, I think we've complied with most of it.
Good. Go ahead, Rick. So this is the first time I've seen the two plans side by side, the pre-existing conditions. And what's there now? I, I didn't realize how much, first of all, the, the stockade fence listed on the plans, is that on your property or off your property?
On.
It's on your property? On, off to the right?
Oh, so that is, I think, over here? That's for the neighbor's site. That's not Mr. Sullivan's.
So that solid black line is your property line?
Correct.
So when they took out that hillside, it looks like a lot of it was piled up behind the property. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's where, so Mr. Whitney had said that, you know, roughly 1,600 cubic yards left. Roughly, you know, almost 500 is that berm to the back of the property now.
Okay.
So that's where that, when he said some of it stayed, that's where it stayed.
Yeah. So, so over, over 500 cubic yards were dumped in the back, raising it up about seven feet in some spots? Basically, it looks like he moved the peak of the hillside.
Yeah, it's about five cubic yards. Yeah. So, but this original hill was a.
Right. Well.
So that berm is at about one.
My concern is the McKinnons had no right to take that fill on their land. And we need to have a conversation with them too. Because they dropped 500 cubic yards of fill on their property and, without a fill permit. So we probably need to have a conversation with them too. I mean, it says right here, they, they raised their, their property seven feet. So, I mean, we need to talk to them too. But you also said you brought back 400? Where did that, was that just dispersed kind of across?
Yeah, that was processed gravel and it was.
Okay.
In the original project narrative, it was in order to make it level and into usable surface to park the vehicles on.
Okay. All right.
So the proposed site plan that we had, which has now, like I said, been revised, but the, the original side-by-side plan we had back a couple of months ago when we were told to commit, that was one of the first things I had done, was it was hard to figure out what exactly happened out here. So that was the first task that we did. So we, I thought we had gone a little bit over that. Again, some of the numbers with the pluses and the minuses, and some went here and some went there, gets a little confusing, but.
So that hill, hillside was all dirt? It wasn't like ledger rock or?
Yeah, it's all.
Okay.
Dirt. And actually, you know, the soil maps show it as gravelly sand and, and we did two test pits and that confirms it. So it's, it's surprisingly nice, coarse sand.
Okay. All right, yeah, those are just, looking at this, I just, that's what I noticed right off the top. So that's all I have for now. But for the board, I would like to send a letter to the McKinnon property.
Like to do what?
Send a letter to the McKinnon property about what was filled on their yard. Like I said, they had more than 500 cubic yards and our permit is 250. So I don't know how the board feels, but we're going to force this thing. Let's enforce it.
I know there's, there's some public here that if, anything you said in the past we have on record and everything, is there anything you need to add or anything?
Yeah, do you want me to take the mic or just?
Sure.
All right, Pat Kearney, 652 Adam Street. You guys probably know by now. My concerns are that clearly in the, in the town zoning bylaws is, is, this is obviously not a finalized site plan. There's no landscaping, no lighting or anything like that.
That all we, that.
Yeah. My, my biggest concern is obviously, we do not have a good relationship. And the zoning bylaws state that there should be a 20-foot buffer strip on all sides. The word "all" is in the paragraph in the zoning bylaws, all sides. There's only about 20, 23, 24 feet between his house and my property line. That's where he brings his trucks in and out. And by the way, there's also a cease and desist order from the town's attorney demanding that he remove all commercial equipment immediately. Mr. Whitney said that it leaves sometime in November, December. The issue was, the letter was issued on November 26th. I spoke to the town because he hadn't gotten anything out. They said they were going to wait until December 1st. It's now December 7th. And as of two hours ago, well, now three hours ago, there's still six or seven commercial trucks on the property, plows everywhere, bobcats, forklifts, Conoco boxes.
That's, and it's.
I know, I know it's not a planning issue, but I'm just trying to, trying to establish how his, he, he doesn't like to comply with anything.
I know town council has that, and there's some legal positions going on. And I know they're handling it.
Correct. Correct. But yeah, obviously, my concern is, I've said before, my granddaughter's play, my, my playground is right about here on the property, right up against the fence. It was years before he brought his property. I just, I just want a 20-foot buffer strip with rows of trees between me and him, so I don't have to see, smell, or hear his trucks or worry about one of them crashing through the fence. That's, that's my biggest concern. And, and his drainage plan, obviously, whatever cisterns or, or catch basins he's going to put, I would imagine also have to be 20 feet off the property line too. I, I don't know that for sure, but, you know, he obviously, he wants to put, he wants to put his big catch basin right there, right near my property. It's just.
I know that's part of it in, in the letter from the engineer, so.
Yeah, my, my concern is the oil that drains off his trucks. I, I've sent you guys pictures. You've seen the oil drippings all over the place. And currently, there is an old rusted out truck bed right in this corner that he uses for dump stuff, for all his old oil filters, fluorescent lights, steel cables with, with oil in them, all kinds of stuff that's considered hazardous waste. And it's right against my property line. So obviously, he's a belligerent neighbor. And he doesn't want to conform to anything. So it's going to be up to the board to make sure that he does. Thank you.
Make sure that Mike gets all the information.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think I emailed the applicant, but I need a new check because this has $100 more in it. And I believe in Mike's letter, he said to pay a full review again. So I would need that before they submit any more plans. And I actually need this like tomorrow because the engineering's already done.
Do you hear that? I don't know if you heard that.
I believe I emailed the client. Did I email you about the money?
Yes.
Okay. So do you have a check with me tonight?
I have a check.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess it's a matter of paying for the engineer and so forth. And I guess it's all taken care of. Then you have the check.
As long as he gives me the checks, it'll be fine.
Yes, Joe, he did come.
Yeah, that's fine.
Fine, we'll, we'll continue the hearing to, to January 4th.
And your engineer and our engineer get together and work all the stuff up in the meantime.
I think that would be very much appreciated. I think we can make great headway. And we got off to a rough start with the board hearing with respect to permits that are required for the site plan. But I can tell you that Mr. Sullivan, who has his commission, is that the property is going to take care of the property and is going to respect his neighbors. And the zoning bylaw does call for a 20-foot strip, but it also says, in the alternative, appropriate fencing.
Accompanied by appropriate plantings and still a 20-foot strip?
Accompanied by appropriate plantings, correct, correct.
But it's still a 20-foot strip?
We're prepared to do that. And I believe these revised plans show that. They will be shown when we come back in January. So.
Okay.
The other thing too, that is noting, is that we've heard about McKinnon, and that's fair game. He should be brought in because there's something Phil was moved over there. But Patrick, you don't come to him with completely clean hands either, because you removed hundreds of yards off your property and didn't get any kind of appropriate relief to do so. So.
I, I didn't remove any.
Everybody here's called. 167 cubic yards to be, to be accurate. And so everybody comes here with the dirt on their hands, if you excuse the thought. And, and we're trying to make good. Mr. Sullivan's committee, he's hired me, he's hired Mr. Hardy to do whatever is required by the board to make things correct.
If you want to make things correct, you can start by obeying the cease and desist order.
I'm sorry?
If you want to make things correct and do good, you can start by obeying the cease and desist order.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And motion to continue the hearing until the 4th.
Motion to continue to the 4th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I guess Mr. Riley is going to talk about the, is that all we have left is at Progress Street then?
He's still here? Yeah. Well, the housing production plan got approved.
Oh.
If you want to bop through that real quick. I'm not sure if I sent you a copy of that, but.
Yeah, the housing production plan needs to be approved.
No, it was approved.
It was approved.
It was approved by the state.
We approved it in the board's second.
I think we already did that.
No, no, it was approved by the state.
Yeah, no, but I mean, we approved it in the board's second. It was in the state.
Can you guys explain that to me? It's kind of vague.
Huh?
Can you explain that to me? The letter's kind of vague.
What?
Or am I missing something?
I figured it made sense to somebody who knew what they were talking about.
Who knew what a housing production plan was?
Remember, we approved it. Old Colony did the housing production plan.
All right.
And we approved it. And then I had, I went to the board's second for the board.
Right.
And talked about it. And they approved it. And then DHCD had to approve.
Okay, all right.
Lauren, once she's happy, she wrote it. Liz told her. I told her. She's happy.
So.
Good for five.
I think the deal is that we're allowed to account, we, we can count affordable housing stock now that we're approved.
Yeah.
So they, like the.
And I guess where, where are we at with the affordable housing?
So if that project that got approved on Plymouth Street ever gets built, we'll be within seven units.
But it's not built, so you can't.
It's not built, we can't count them.
So how many are we net right at the moment?
So that's 144 plus seven, so 151, if my math is quick, right?
The problem with that whole.
So somebody could come in with a 40 billion substantially.
157 units, yep.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious, be careful what you wish for the last meeting we had.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, one of the things too is that town meeting approved a CPA project to create the housing trust. And that was one of the things that's in the housing production plan. There were a lot of things in the housing production plan. But, so actually, I can say this, that the Affordable Housing Committee met and Suckman have invited members of the public to apply for positions to be trustees on the Affordable Housing Trust. And I applied and people in the committee applied for it and stuff like that. So, you know, there was, there was money approved at town meeting for that. And, you know, it'll be good to move that forward. And this is all stuff that was in the, you know, the affordable housing plan.
Yep.
I have to have something to do with it at times.
No, I was just thinking that.
I'm trying to agree with them. When I was at their decision at all tonight, I was just trying to get some initial feedback. I'm, sorry. Talking about the situation or, sorry, the location of the property, I'm going to speak with Joe Franny. I'm sorry, I'm missing a, maybe you guys should.
Sorry, I know the question.
The property that is between Progress Street and, what's called, Anderson's Lotion? Not Anderson's Lotion, I bet.
It's the Anderson property.
Yeah.
The west side of Progress Street. So it's Progress Street and Spencer's Pizza. Okay? I gave you a copy of a portion, a colored zoning map and then a, a white page which shows the assessors' plan. And as you're aware, the, everything on the right side or the east side of Progress, almost everything on the east side of Progress Street is in the TOD, Transatlantic Development District. And on the west side or the right side of Progress Street is currently in the R30 zone. Everything south of that, on the south side of Summer Street is the R20 zone. And the R20 zone down there is bounded by the river on the left or the west and the train tracks on the right of the east. So back up on Progress Street, the TOD goes to the railroad track, I think it goes a little bit beyond it. And it go, and the, it's all R30 however on the west side. We were looking at the possibility of submitting an article to discuss changing the zoning on the west side of Progress Street between Progress and the river to use the same boundary line as the R20 zone. South of Summer Street would be the same going north of Summer Street. And to be honest with you, we were looking at whether it would be more beneficial to go with R20 or with an expanded TOD. Either extend R20 north in that same area or extend the TOD west in that area. Some of the reasons were is everything in that area right now is already, with the exception of one property, is already multifamily or R20. When Mr. Franny was talking with Mr. Anderson, they own some businesses in that same property. They were talking about, should it be TOD? Because then it allows some business. They already have existing businesses. The concern is, and on that white piece of paper, you see the red numbers? That's the number of units of, so there's four family, an eight family, a three family, a three family, a three family, and a one family. In the R30, you're not allowed to have multifamilies, three or more. So these are now non-conforming uses. So it creates zoning issues moving forward. If you make it R20, multifamilies are allowed with a special permit. So they don't become non-conforming because they are already multifamily. So to be honest with you, I, I'm not really, I haven't come to a conclusion whether the R20 would be more appropriate because it helps the residential nature and the existing businesses can stay there because they're already non-conforming under the R30. And if they wanted to expand or change, they'd have to go through zoning for permission to do so. If we went with TOD, TOD allows multifamily also, but it also allows some businesses. And before I got too far with Joe, I just said, I wanted to just throw it out there and bounce it to you guys. And I said, I'm not looking for you guys to give me example, you know, direction today. Maybe you want to think about it. But if you had any initial feedback, we'd be curious, because we're just trying to figure out, the bulk of this property that you're looking at, and I wrote the word wetlands, down on the Summer Street's end is wet. is wet. The only real vacant land is some of Joe Franny's land that's behind Franny Refrigeration. He may have an access from Center Avenue, he may have an access from Progress Street, but that's the only undeveloped piece of property. In the, basically right in the center of that large parcel, everything down towards the south near Summer Street is wet and a lot of it on the east on Progress Street is wet. And you'll see on the right side or the east side of Progress Street are a series of mostly single-family houses, a couple of two-family houses, and the sewer department and a commercial building down near Summer Street. That actually is currently zoned R-30, but if it went to R-20, it would still be allowed use, you know, one family or a two-family in the R-20 or the three-family. So I, I don't know if there's any, I don't want to take a lot of your time because I know you've already had quite a long night. But it's something we're considering is to make, have a file petition to R-20 or TOD. And I need to think about it more and I didn't know if you had any immediate sense or not.
Well, I'm going, I'll speak. You know, I would support expanding the Transit Oriented Development District there. I mean, it's a small piece of land you're talking about here and it's there, it's close to the train station. And it would allow residential and it would allow commercial. And because it's so close to the train station, I think that that would be the spirit of, you know, wanting to have it.
It's definitely walkable, you're right. I mean, it's right down the street.
Yeah, I mean, it's walkable, it's down the street, it fits all the requirements of the TOD. And, you know, there is going to be development, we went through this, there is going to be more development in the TOD district, but.
You mean on the, on the inbound lane?
Well, yeah, they, well, I'm just, I'm not going to get specific, but, you know, the land is there, will be developed. This is really a small portion of land. I just think it fits the spirit of the area. It's walkable, it's close to the train station to have its TOD. Because that way you get to, you can continue to have a business and you can have a multifamily, which addresses those issues.
Yeah, it, it does.
Through special permits.
In the, in, if, in the TOD district, a special permit, or actually in the R-20 or the TOD, a multifamily is special permit, they're the same. The only difference residentially is the R-20 allows a two-family with a special permit and it allows a one-family as of right, whereas the TOD does not allow a one-family or a two-family. Now, for those people who live on Progress Street who already have a one-family, a two-family, you're, you're protected. We're not going, we can't take that away.
No.
But for example, an existing one-family wanting to become a two-family, it would be easier to do if it was R-20, it'd be a little bit harder to do if it was a TOD. There's pros and cons to both of them, but to your point, the theory is because it's near the train, it's more likely to be developed towards multifamily. And both the R-20 and the TOD would allow that with a special permit and site planner here with the board.
Yeah, that's why I support it because it's, it fits, I guess as a professional planner, I mean, it just goes along with the theory.
Retired professional planner.
Well, I mean, I guess it's like, you're a Marine, you're always a Marine. I'm going to always be a planner.
Hey, Sean?
Yeah.
Who owns the big parcel? Number two?
Joe Franny.
Joe Franny owns it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to take the opposite and I would not have zero appetite to rezone this. We've already heard from people who, and they're right, there is way too much traffic on Summer Street, Progress Street, and Center Street. Way too much. So this land potentially is larger than what we just had 156 unit development for. Not all of it is buildable, but you're still talking, if we do TOD, you're still talking possibly 100 unit development right there. And I don't think that's.
It's, it's, it would never be close to that because we've been looking at it, but I, I understand what your concern is.
Yeah.
And we're a long way away from getting to a decision. I just wanted to.
So I, I, I'm also not much in the appetite of, you know, a series of, of row houses or whatever else has become popular, that if it's R-30 and someone wants to build a couple of houses there, that's their right. But I'm, I'd have zero appetite to lower the threshold to increase more density in this neighborhood right now. Sorry.
No, it's, that's, that's why I'm here, I want to get a little feedback. The TOD kind of encourages more density.
Right.
It's just, like I said, in this specific area, it already is, it's not R-30, it's, it already is all multifamily with the exception of my house.
Do you have a sense of how much that area is upland, billable upland? Because like you said, right along Progress Street's another small stream.
Oh, yeah. And Progress, the majority of that is, is one of the, we're actually trying to get it flagged in the next week or two, so I'll have a much better idea. I just, I just talked to Joe and I said, I have to go here for some other administration stuff, I'll mention it tonight. So, you know, I'll put this aside and I get more information, I can come back to you because obviously if we ever did get that by whatever hearing, we'd have to prove our point why R-20, R-30, or TOD would be the best.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, because the single-family houses being developed in this town are a large lot. But I mean, I live right down the street from 121 Randall Street and that's going great guns. I mean, that, those are what, 77s anyway? Those are apartments, those are places where people will live. And you drive around town and you go and you see the single, I mean, I live in an R-20 district, my lot's a quarter acre, you know, but it seems like, there doesn't, you have to have really large lots to support single-family houses these days, but, and the trend, and, you know, we're on television, but I think the trend is for multifamily, you know, apartments and stuff like that to provide places where people live because as the land is so expensive, the developer's got to get a return on it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that and, and I also agree with Rick. I mean, they're appropriate in certain areas and they're, and single-family houses are appropriate in other areas. This area is kind of surrounded by, well, it's bordered by three different zones, so, you know, and the river there, so it's, it's an interesting mix already. And so I think it's what's the future, what do you want there in the future? But again, I don't, I don't want to take a lot of your time.
I think one of the arguments that they, they have made up there is the fact that it wasn't R-20 and it was changed to R-30. And so I think there was some plans, and I know there was some plans of, of doing something up there, but when it went to R-30, no one said anything and it went to R-30. That's the reason for the R-20.
I, I can confirm, I, I can't remember the history of the zone, but I do know when the, when the condominiums on Center Avenue right next to Franny were built a number of years ago, Mr. Franny reserved or an access easement to get out to his backyard, back land, I should say, to potentially build more condos out back. It was going to be kind of his retirement plan. In fact, the people who built the condos out in the street wanted to buy it and he wouldn't let them buy it. So it is most likely that would be the highest best use. It's certainly not a commercial use, wouldn't be good out there because of the amount of wetlands and everything, but, you know, we'll see where it goes.
Well, it's good to have this discussion considering what happened at town meeting as far as, you know, zoning changes and stuff like that. So this really needs to be thought out and, you know, to have further discussion on this.
Yeah, it certainly.
I, I would like to, after Summer Street, I'd like to think a little bit more, what does the TOD mean to me? What, because I go, I didn't expect something that large coming before in a TOD area.
Well, Rick, I mean.
I know, now you're retired.
You know, but Jeff, you, you know, come on, town passed TOD a long time ago and it was really thoroughly discussed. You really should look into it, there are benefits to TOD development.
No, no, I absolutely think so, but, well, when someone came with, I mean, those multiple buildings and residential's a stronger thing.
I'm still gathering information, so I'll know more. If it's something that they want to pursue, I'll come back with a much better view of what this land is and what it's not and some surrounding, a lot of factors.
Quick question?
Sure.
Historically, is there, was there a use for this? Has it always just been wooded?
Yeah.
Has there been anything else?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I've been here for a while.
I was just curious because one, it's such a big parcel, and two, there's a piece of it owned by Plymouth County at the bottom of it. Didn't know why, if there's a particular reason, if there was something.
If you follow the stream, which I highlighted in yellow or the river, whatever it is there, it goes down into basically the well area for the town by, down behind Myers Avenue.
Right.
So remember, if you, if you go down Summer Street from 18, there's that stretch before you get to the sewer department where there's basically swamp on the left and right.
Yeah.
On the left is the Plymouth County land and the Franny land.
Right.
So my humble opinion, I'm not a wetland scientist, you won't see a road connection off of Summer Street. I don't know that you could even get one off of Progress Street. That's what they're trying, they have to do the wetland delineation to see what's really there and what's not.
Yeah, the wetlands is still predominant. And because it's a wellhead area and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's, you know, Myers have wells and stuff like that. I mean, you know, Rick, you know, historically, I mean, I'm old enough to know that most of the houses off of Hancock Street, that was all farmland.